Good evening and welcome to the April 10th Regular School Board Meeting. At this time, please rise if you're able to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. First order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. We are working from a revised agenda tonight. The speaker for our new business item, Administrative Regulation 801.5R, is going to be Barb St. Aubin, not Kaia Bruce, and we will be removing the expulsion of a student under the consent agenda. With those changes, is there a motion to approve the gen...
So moved.
Thank you. Motion by Joel, second by Jackie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a five-zero vote. We do have Sakhoudin and Art who couldn't be with us tonight. Next order of business is sometimes our most fun order of business at our board meetings. It is our recognition. First up, I would like to welcome Mr. Rob Francino and Ms. Sandra Seder Larson to the podium to introduce our 2023 Excel Award recipients.
Good evening and thank you. Sandy's going to come up after me and present her student. Good evening Superintendent Krieger, Chairperson Johnson, and members of the board. My name is Rob Francino. I'm an Assistant Principal at Eastview High School, and I want to thank you for taking the opportunity to recognize students. You know, great organizations and great districts are ones that take the opportunity to recognize their stakeholders, so thank you for continually doing that. I know there's a lot of recognition here tonight, and I looked at the agenda, and it makes me proud to be part of a school district that supports these activities, for parents that support our students, and for, most importantly, our students and our coaches and advisors who take the time to put in to exceed at a high level. So congratulations and thank you to all our participants. I'm honored to recognize Eastview Junior Emily Percival for being named one of the State Excel Award recipients. It's very special to me because I've known Emily since she was a young lady now to where she is today. It's been rewarding to watch her maturation and growth over the many years and her success. You may recognize the last name is Percival. Her dad is Matt Percival, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director at Eastview High School for the past 27 years. He's provided our district and our school outstanding leadership, and I see where Emily gets those characteristics from. Matt and Robin are here tonight, so congratulations to you as well. The Minnesota State High School League Excel Award Committee selects 35 state participants to receive this award out of 400 member schools who nominate individuals for the... So it's quite an accomplishment. Excel stands for Excellence in Community Education and Leadership. Junior students who are active in their school activities show great leadership qualities, and who are model citizens in their school and community are eligible for this award. These 35 candidates were recently congratulated and honored at Williams Arena during halftime of the state girls' basketball championship at the state level. Nominees for the Excel Award score points based on a few metrics. One, leadership and involvement in Minnesota State High School League activities, general leadership, and community service. Emily's resume in these categories is simply quite impressive. As a junior, she has already lettered 14 times, varsity lettered 14 times in athletics, lettering every season in the seventh grade in three seasons for cross-country, Nordic ski, and track and field. There has been no other student in Eastview's history that has lettered in three sports for all three seasons since the seventh grade. That's quite an accomplishment. In cross-country, she is a four-time state competitor, a four-time all-conference winner, a three-time captain, and a two-time all-state academic selection. In Nordic ski, she is a four-time state meet competitor, a four-time all-conference, was this year's South Suburban Conference Individual Champion, two-time team captain, and all-state and all-American, all-academic selection, along with being named the Midwest Junior National Team, where she was recently in Fairbank, Alaska, on the U.S. Junior National Team competing. She currently carries a 3.984 GPA while taking a heavy honors and AP course load. At Eastview, she's involved in National Honor Society, National Speech Honor Society, Captain's Council, Link Leadership, and the Lightning Press, which is our school newspaper. In the community, her highlights include volunteering with the Minnesota Youth Ski League, the Twin Cities Marathon, where she volunteers regularly with our cross-country team, and spending many, many hours volunteering at Eastview since she was this big to where she is now. Anytime we need volunteers, she's always willing to help out in any capacity. She's obviously well-deserving of this award. Some things her coaches have to say about her. Ms. Ellen McCarthy from the Nordic Ski Team, Emily is an outstanding leader on the Nordic Ski Team. She is an excellent athlete, energetic competitor, and attentive captain. She possesses a dedication to the sport that is impressive and admirable. She always elevates her teammates and helps them succeed at a higher level. Ms. Georgine Fisher, our track and cross-country coach. During practice and meets, Emily is willing to take the lead and set the pace for the rest of the team. This is not an easy task, certainly is a huge responsibility. She steps up and accepts that challenge and is an outstanding leader for our team. Obviously, these accolades are well-warranted for Emily to receive this honor, and please help me in congratulating Emily Percil for the 2023 Excel State Award winner.
Good evening Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, and Superintendent Krieger. Thanks for having us here, and I'll reiterate what Rob just said, that we are very thankful that you honor our students and student athletes. It's a great thing in 196, and we appreciate it. Tonight, I am here to honor and present our Minnesota State High School League state-level Excel winner, Mr. Mason Hokenga. The Excel, as Rob said, sponsored by the Minnesota State High School League, and it's pretty amazing for a district to have two students from it that have been honored at the state level out of 35 when we have 525 schools that are member schools. So it's a pretty neat night, and congratulations to Emily wherever she went to. Well done, girl. Sometimes in life, we get to see excellence. We recognize it when we see it, and it's really special when we get to meet those of excellence. Tonight is your night to meet a couple of kids of great excellence. It is said the best leaders are those who are servant leaders, those whose actions and values match up with a mission to matter for others. This is Mason. Every single person, and I mean every single person I talked to or heard from about Mason to a T, said in my career, one of the top or best people I have ever met. Not student, person. Pretty amazing and pretty powerful. All of us have gifts. One of Mason's gifts is that he's a man of action. He sees the need and he fills it. Last fall on his own, he created and organized and put on a 5K run. He called the run Fight for Food 5K, right? He saw a need to raise money for Feed My Starving Children and wanted to make sure that he could leave a legacy for the community. And so, he ran, he created that run, he organized it, he put it on, and he plans to do it again this November. He wants to create that into a 501(c)(3) so that he can leave that legacy to move forward, continuing to raise money for that great organization. Bill Wersbinski, math teacher and interact club supervisor, said Mason is a phenomenal young man. He's an exceptional math student and a volunteer extraordinaire. Mason embodies the expression "have a cause other than yourself." Mason has been involved in a number of activities at Eagan High School. He's a three-year participant in cross-country, has lettered two of those years. He's been selected as captain for his senior year, and you're going to hear all the great things about him and understand why. Mason has also been a baseball player at Eagan, has earned the Wildcats Service Award. Mason is also a leader on our speech team. He's earned letters in all years of participation, is a category captain, is qualified for national tournaments, and earned the Reed Award last year, which represents leaders who put the team before themselves. Mason has also served his school as a member of the National Honor Society, our link crew, peer tutor, and student government, and served the community through coaching and his church. His PAWS homeroom teacher, Kim Hansen Ashland, had this to say. Mason is awesome. He is a positive leader in our PAWS homeroom and with students in general. When one of our PAWS students was ill, he took a leadership role in making sure that we could stay connected with the ill student. Mason is one of the top students I've ever had the honor to teach in my 20-plus years of teaching. He will make a difference in people's lives throughout his lifetime. I can't wait to see where his talents lead him. Reece Anderson, Mason's speech coach, had this to say. Mason may very well be the most responsible, determined, and driven student I have ever coached. Mature and focused, Mason is a strong candidate to lead many of his peers. The combination of his desire to do well and his engaged persistence is what stands out about Mason. That he balances athletics, EHS cross-country and baseball, and speech, where he excelled as a novice last year and placed fifth at the NSDA National Qualifying Tournament, and qualified for NITOC last May in 2022. That he maintains a 3.98 GPA is a testament to his dedication, focus, and drive. After 15 years in speech, I am most impressed with how humble he is and believe these characteristics make him genuinely well-liked by his peers. At speech meets, I observe Mason talking to the younger kids, making sure they know where to go, and checking in on their progress. He is a respected favorite within the team. Here's what I love about Mason. Although a great competitor, he is humble, gracious, and kind person, and everything he does is with grace. When I asked him what he was most proud of, he said, "When I am able to help others, whether a younger teammate or someone in class, I love to help others." Pretty cool. Mason is the son of Janelle and Jonathan, who are in our audience tonight. Thanks for being here. Members of the board, I am proud to present to you Mr. Mason Hokenga,
Wonderful. Next, I'd like to welcome Head Coach Nick Fornacoa up to introduce us to the state wrestling Eastview High School Boys Tournament third place.
Good evening. Good evening Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, and Superintendent Mary Krieger. Congratulations to all those being honored tonight and all those that will follow. My name is Nick Fornacoa, Head Wrestling Coach at Eastview High School, and I will talk about our boys' team and our girls' team as well. It is my pleasure to recognize Nolan Enderline, Ezra Formanik, and Riley Myers for their accomplishments as student athletes on behalf of the Eastview faculty and student body. Tonight, we have Ezra and Riley here. Nolan couldn't make it tonight. A little bit about Eastview Wrestling 2023. Our model this year was Kaizen, which is, it's a term that means constant learning and constant improvement, daily improvement. And these wrestlers up here not only improved and learned daily, but they helped lead our team to improve and learn daily. And so, that really led us to having a successful season. We had 15 wins. We finished 10th unofficially at the state individual tournament. For the 23rd year in a row, we were honored, recognized by the State Coaches Association as an Academic Gold Team. We had a team GPA of 3.87. And Nolan, Ezra, and Riley were top of that list, top of that list. So not only athletically, but academically as well. We qualified five wrestlers for the state tournament, and we had four state place winners. We had 52 wrestlers finish the season, and 48 of those were boys and four were girls. So now I get to talk about the honorees, and Nolan is not here, but I would introduce him as wrestling at 106 pounds, Nolan Enderline. Nolan shared with me his favorite memories from his time at Eastview Wrestling. Were hanging with his teammates, and especially hanging with his brothers. He has four brothers, three have or are currently wrestling at Eastview. His favorite wrestling move is called the California Roll. He's very good at it. It led him to this next accomplishment. His favorite moment from Eastview is getting a pin for third place at state. The ultimate, that's the ultimate in wrestling, is going for the pin. And Nolan had 41 wins this year, 31 by pin. State record, just our school record, school record, and just a dominant season. Lot of them with the California Roll. He is a two-time state place winner. He placed third this year and sixth last year. He also was honored as one of the 28 only wrestlers that were honored as all-state academic by the Coaches Association. Nolan's future plans are to work in the medical field. Now wrestling at 182 pounds, Ezra Formanik. Ezra is a three-sport athlete. Okay, Ezra excels in three sports: football, wrestling, and baseball. Ezra's favorite memory from wrestling, this is a quote right here, "Hugging my teammates, coaches, and family after wrestling my final match of my career." Love that. He included his teammates, his coaches, and his family. We'll talk about family later. His favorite wrestling move is the head-outside single. That shocks me because he's good at so many. I didn't know what his favorite was. Ezra's been around wrestling for over 10 years because his brother wrestled. His sister was an outstanding manager for us. My wife remembers a little squirrely nine, 10-year-old kid in the stands, just peeking over the bleachers saying, "That's gonna be me," as he's pointing at the varsity wrestling under the mat lamp. Well, he did it. Nolan had 41 wins. Ezra had 42. Again, school record. Those two competed all the time. 42 wins this season, most ever by an Eastview wrestler. Again, a dominant season. Ezra started wrestling at a young age, five-time academic gold for us, five times. His future plans are to play Division One baseball at the University of St. Thomas. Wrestling at 145 pounds, Riley Myers. Riley is another competitive person as a wrestler, anything that she does. She competes fiercely in the room, especially she gets to compete sometimes against her brother who also wrestles. Her favorite wrestling move is the crossface to a cradle, and she is tough. She is fierce with that. Not a lot of times in wrestling will you pick top in that position, but we go top because we know she's so good in that position. She's so tough, and her opponents don't want anything to do with her in that position. Riley's favorite memory is, quote from Riley, "Winning the first-ever Minnesota State High School League sanctioned women's wrestling state championships at 138 pounds in 2022." She is proud of making it back to the state finals this year and placing second. One of only a few girls in the state to be in the state finals two years in a row. So Riley is a two-time Academic Gold Member, again, in the classroom and in the athletic arena. She also plays lacrosse. She is a junior. She plans on working hard in the weight room and making it back to the state championship next year. The three wrestlers have a common trait of having dominant performances. Riley's dominant performance, two times in the finals. Another thing that they have in common is a tremendous support system from home. Their parents are here tonight, as they have been throughout their careers. So Gina and Pat Enderline are here, Angie and Greg Formanik are here, and Christie and Lauren Myers are here. We thank you for your support and congratulations. Board Members, I get my honor to present to you Eastview's place winners Nolan Enderline,
Next, I'd like to welcome Assistant Coach Tyler Zimmerman to introduce us to the Apple Valley High School Girls State Wrestling Tournament winners.
Thank you and good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Chairperson Magnuson, Superintendent Krieger, and the rest of the School Board Members for having us here tonight. My name is Tyler Zimmerman. I teach biology at Apple Valley High School, and I'm one of the wrestling coaches. This season was filled with several highlights. As a team, we once again qualified for the Class AAA Minnesota State Wrestling Tournament, our 38th appearance as a school. Our school's been a school for 47 years. We also qualified 13 individual wrestlers for state, seven boys and six girls, with nine of those wrestlers earning all-state honors, eight returning back next year for next season. Our team continues to excel in the classroom as well, earning the Gold Academic Award for the 10th consecutive year and a team GPA of 3.61. And our girls' team was recognized by the NWCA as the 2023 State Individual Team Champions. But tonight, I'm here to recognize the outstanding accomplishments of three student athletes, Grace Alagbo, SB Cavayo, and Glorian Vigniavou. The parents of these students are mixed on if they could be here tonight, so I'm going to say, "Please stand and be recognized, Gabby Sanchez, Kajovi, and Kukoi Vigniavou." Thank you for your continued support.[1269.11][1269.11](applause) Grace Alagbo, although she fell just short of victory during her state finals match this year, Grace is a pioneer and leader in the sport of girls' wrestling in the state of Minnesota. As one of her coaches, I was able to see her and the hard work she puts in every day, both on the mat and in the classroom. Now a two-time state finalist and a two-time all-state wrestler in only her second year of wrestling, Grace sets a high standard for not only herself, but also for her fellow teammates. Early in the season, Grace competed at the Dan Gable Donnie Brook Tournament in Iowa, becoming the first-ever Apple Valley High School wrestler to advance to the finals amidst a bracket of nationally-ranked opponents. As a junior, Grace maintains a 3.72 GPA and has enrolled in several AP and honors classes. SB Cavayo, SB competed in her first year ever of wrestling at Apple Valley High School, where she was also a member of the girls' basketball team. SB made an immediate impact on our team. SB's combination of strength, speed, and mental toughness allowed her to excel in the sport from the start. In her first-ever section tournament, SB defeated the returning state third-place and fourth-place finishers to qualify for the state tournament as only a freshman. At state, she went on to place third, going 2-1 against the state's toughest competition. We're excited for what the future holds for SB, and we expect to see her competing for state championships over her next three seasons. Glorian Vigniavou, Glow has a record this year of 23 and 3, and capped off her junior season by placing third at the state tournament at 185 pounds. This season, Glow won championships at the Athena Invite, Rogers Holiday Tournament, Champlin Park, and the inaugural Clash Individual Tournament. We're excited to have Glow back for another season next year as a senior leader on her team, even though she is very busy doing all kinds of AP honors and robotics things in her spare time. We watch and challenge her for next year's state title. Thank you again for having, School Board Members, and congratulations to the three Apple Valley girls here today for your incredible accomplishments this season. Thank you.[1411.11][1411.11](applause)
Next, I'd like to welcome Head Coach Tyler Kukis to introduce us to the Rosemont Girls' State Wrestling Tournament winner.
Thank you. Good evening Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Tyler Kukis. I'm a co-head wrestling coach at Rosemont High School, and it is with great honor that I get to introduce to you Camden Salter. We're here to recognize Kami for her achievements in girls' wrestling this year. Kami is the pioneer of girls' wrestling at Rosemont High School. Last year, as an eighth grader, Kami became the first-ever girls' wrestler to wrestle in our school history, but which was more impressive that she was the first-ever girls' wrestler to compete on varsity in school history. In that role as a varsity wrestler over the past two years, Kami has amassed 14 varsity wins, and this year, as a freshman, achieved another feat in school history, being our first-ever girls' section champion, first-ever girls' all-conference wrestler, and first-ever girls' state place winner, in which she took third place at the state tournament this year in St. Paul. Kami is joined by her family tonight. If you want to stand up, we have her father, Richard Salter, and her two other brothers are actually here too. Both of them also compete on the varsity with us, so we have three Salters on our varsity team here tonight. Pretty neat experience at St. Paul this year for the state wrestling tournament. Her brother, Ty, was also wrestling there and took sixth place. So having those two siblings, Kami being in the girls' tournament and Ty in the boys' tournament, was a pretty cool experience, having those two siblings compete in St. Paul together. So congratulations to Kami and everything that she's done. A couple other girls have come out for wrestling, and it's all because of Kami, and she's just a complete magnet for those girls and a great example for them. So congratulations to all of Kami's accomplishments. She's a freshman, so we have a lot more good years to have her.
Fantastic. Next, I would like to welcome Mr. Bob Detmer to the podium to introduce us to the Eastview High School State Chess Champions.
All right. It's been a lot of wrestlers up here tonight. We're going to take a quick turn and do chess. Maybe we'll train together. Good evening Chairperson Johnson, School Board Members, and Superintendent Krieger. Thank you for the privilege of being here tonight to allow us to recognize the state champion, Eastview Chess Team. My name is Bob Detmer, and I teach English at Eastview High School and serve as the chess advisor. The students that are here tonight, Senior Ben Vanorne could not join us, but the other ones are Junior Isaac Traynor, Junior Ethan Poit, and Sophomore Nirv Singal. They were the top four performers at the state chess tournament last month, and before I give you more details about the tournament, I would like to say a few words about these young men. Their collective GPA is 3.98. I had each of them in class. They are tremendous students. 3.98. Each of them takes multiple honors, AP, college, and the schools classes. Each of them is well-rounded with a variety of other sports, activities at Eastview, track, tennis, marching band, jazz band, science limpiead, math team, and many more. I don't know how they do it. All four, well, Ben, if he were here, all are current captains. They are role models to the rest of the team, and they help create a positive welcoming culture on our team. Sports teams have videos that they study to review their game performances. In chess, we have something called notation. Exhibit A. Notation is something where you write down your moves. You write down your moves, your opponent, you write down your opponent's moves, so that later you can load it on to an online engine, and you can study the game. That's how we get better. This allows them to enter it, and then they kind of helps them analyze the strength of their moves, and they can figure out where mistakes were made. Each of these three gentlemen, they volunteer to review their games in front of the team, which means showing good games and not-so-good games. And each of them is quick to admit their mistakes in front of the team, with a lot of laughter usually, and it's the goal of using that game to help the team improve their skill. But when captains model that kind of transparency, it creates a positive culture and team success. These three young men are the epitome of what we strive to be in our district, a place where students can challenge themselves with academics, athletics, activities, and the arts to build their knowledge, shape their character, and hone their leadership skills. Now, a few words about chess. After finishing second at the state tournament last year, our goal this year was to win it. The captains and I challenged everybody to get better so that we could play our best when it mattered the most. In the final round of the state chess tournament, there are six total. This took place last month at St. Thomas University. We played our best chess against high-quality competition, winning the state title by a scant one-half of a point, and dethroning the six-time defending champion, Wazetta Trojans. It was a good day. During each match, players must notate all of their moves, they must manage their clock, they must harness their emotions while making quality moves. Once the match begins, they may not talk to anyone, and I must admit that watching the final round for me... the final round for me took several months off of my life. In the end, it was a total team effort. Seventeen players represented Eastview at the tournament, and even though these three young men accrued the most points, the other 13 were instrumental in winning key matches against other schools that were chasing us in the team standings. The Eastview Chess Team represented themselves, Eastview, and this district very well at the state tournament with their talent, their sportsmanship, and their support for one another. Thank you for extending the invitation tonight and for the opportunity to recognize the noteworthy achievements of both these students and the entire Eastview Chess Team. I would like the families and the parents to quickly stand up. Thank you for your support. And a quick aside, we sent six players to the National Chess Tournament last weekend in Washington, DC, and four of them walked away with a 10th-place trophy in their division, which was pretty outstanding, a nice end to the season. All right. That's all I have, so thank you for your time tonight.
And last, but certainly not least, for recognition tonight, I'd like to welcome Head Swim and Dive Coach Jake Kemna to the podium to introduce us to the Rosemont High School State Diving Champion.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Jake Kemna. I'm the head coach of the Rosemount Boys Swim and Dive Programs, and I have the privilege here tonight to present Lucas Gertner on his, one of his successful seasons. I'll start off with the boring stuff first. So, the accomplishments for Lucas just this year, he set three pool records across the state, one of them including one from the late '70s. He set both team records in the six-meter, in the six-and-eleven dive one meter. He set a new Section III AA record, and then won his second consecutive state championship, double-A state championship as a sophomore. So again, we'll get them, and we're also hoping for an All-American status in June. So, that's, again, the boring stuff here. The stuff I really want to talk about tonight with Lucas is what makes him great and what is the reason he's standing up here tonight. What makes him great is he puts high expectations for himself. He doesn't let himself think he's the best. He always thinks he can be just a little bit better. It is constantly working at that. He doesn't just think it, he does it. He follows through with that. He has the untangibles that make him a great athlete. He's be able to, he's able to perform at high levels without being phased. When I was standing behind him at the state championship meet, I didn't want to get in his way. I just kind of let him do his thing, and that's the focus that he has, and those are things that we cannot coach. And those are the things he has. And before, and I do want to recognize one person in the stand before we get to his, or in the audience before we get to his parents. Coach Monahan is in the stands. Please stand up, coach. He is his diving coach. He's the one who puts in day in and day out and puts in the time with Lucas and brings him to that whole other level that Lucas knows he can achieve. And so I can't thank him enough, and I know Lucas can't either. Outside of the pool, Lucas competes in cross-country and track, and he also maintains a 4.0 GPA. But again, the most important part about all of this, and one thing that I know the coach and I pride among all else, is he is one of the best teammates that we have on our, in our entire program. Even outside of his events, he is constantly cheering for his teammates, and he wants success for the team over everything else, and that is something we push for, especially in individual sport, it's hard to do. And he pushes that as a sophomore and leads in that expectation, and we can't thank him enough for that. He has the bragging rights, but is constantly humble. You will never hear him brag once and is actually embarrassed, probably standing up here right now. So again, everything that he's done this season, all right, is all well and great, but again, it's the untangibles and the thing we talked about after his championship that really makes him great and will probably make him one of the best athletes this district will see in a very long time. I'd like to thank and recognize Henry and Teresa Gertner, who are in the audience tonight, for all their support and everything they've done for Lucas as well. So again, this has been a privilege and an honor to be up here to present him, and I can't wait to do it again next year. Thank you.
Right. Next, I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
Okay. It seems like we just continue to have excellence coming forward for us to celebrate. We're so, so privileged to have the kids that we have and the coaches that we have. So with that, I will continue to extend our congratulations. Congratulations to the Eagan High School Girls Basketball Team on competing in this year's Class 4A State Tournament. Congratulations to the Eastview High School Boys Basketball Team on competing in the Class 4A Tournament, where they defeated Minnetoka in the quarterfinal round and lost in semifinals. Congratulations to the Dakota United Hawks on finishing runner-up in the Adaptive Floor Hockey State Tournament PI Division. The Hawks CI team took fourth place. And congratulations to the mock trial teams from Apple Valley and Eastview High Schools on qualifying for and competing in this year's state tournament sponsored by the Minnesota State Bar Association. Apple Valley Coach Eric Strauss was selected to receive the 2023 Volunteer of the Year Award. And so, all of the success of our students in, in all of these different areas really comes from a lot of dedicated adults, and we heard that tonight, the parents, the families, our coaches, and especially our teachers. So next, I'd like to ask any District 196 teachers and school nurses that might be here tonight to stand to be recognized, and I'm not sure that we have them here with us, but hopefully they're able to feel our appreciation from home. In tonight's consent agenda, the school board will be asked to approve resolutions recognizing the great work of our outstanding teachers and school nurses by declaring the week of May 1st through the 5th to be Teachers and School Nurses Appreciation Week in District 196. We want to recognize our teachers as they serve as the role models for the youth of our community. They help them acquire knowledge and skills to be successful contributing members of society, and we also want to thank our school nurses for promoting health and safety and wellness and being there to help create our healthy school environments for all of our students. So thank you to the adults who help support our amazing students.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Krieger. We have no special communication requests tonight, which brings us to our consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the March 13th, 2022 Regular School Board Meeting, District 196 Volunteer Appreciation Week, April 17th through the 21st, the District 196 Teacher Appreciation Week, May 1st through the 5th, the District 196 Nurse Appreciation Week, May 1st through the 5th, gifts, grants, Treasury Report for February 2023, summary of claims for February 2023, schedule of investments for February 2023, revenues and expenditures report for February 2023, 2023-24 tuition rates for foreign students, copier leases, high volume, personnel, employment agreement, employment agreement probationary, termination and non-renewal of probationary teachers, national opioid settlement, supplemental transportation type-three service, supplemental athletic and field trip transportation service contract, and inter-agency early intervention committee joint powers agreement. Are there any items that board members would like to remove from the consent tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Suchin, second by Bianca. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The consent agenda passes on a 5-0 vote. Next on the agenda is reports. I'd like to welcome Mr. Mark Stotts to the podium for a discussion of commissioners' review and comment on proposed referendum.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board. Tonight I'm here for part of the process related to the referendum. The district was required to submit what's called a review and comment to the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education, and we received back a positive review and comment from the department, which we really appreciate. As part of this entire process, we have to discuss the review and comment tonight. We have to publish the last two pages of the review and comment in the board agenda, and those are attached to this item, and then we have to publish a summary of the review and comment, same two pages, in our official newspaper within, I believe, 20 days of the referendum, and so that is going in the official newspaper this Friday, April 14th. So with that, you'll see in the summary, we've detailed out the estimated budget for each building in the, in the district. What I wanted to focus on, again, were the three areas the committee addressed and recommended to the school board, which you approved for a referendum, and that is safety and security, space for future growth, and then consistent experiences throughout the district for our students. So just as kind of a review on things, question one, what's included in the improvements for question one is safety and security improvements at all our schools, an additional elementary school on district-owned land in Rosemount, a new Rosemount Middle School, repurposing the existing Rosemount Middle School, land purchased for current and future uses, complete the renovation of Rosemount High School, science, excuse me, science lab upgrades at secondary schools, in addition to Scott Highlands Middle School, in addition to Dakota Ridge, the building that we're in right here, as well as renovations at Transition Plus, performance space improvements, and then furniture replacements where needed throughout the district. Second question, I think we're all familiar with this, and that's an addition of an activity center space at each of the four comprehensive high schools. So with that, again, the review and comment is there for you to take a look at, as well as the statement from the commissioner stating their approval of us moving forward with this process. So with that, I'd entertain any questions from the board and also from the public. We're required to allow for public comment in this process, and so I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Before I go to the board, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from the board? No questions or comments? It seems pretty straightforward. I read through the review and comment. Always good to have a favorable agreement on what we submitted to the commissioner.
Yep. And I guess as a reminder to people watching the meeting, maybe at home, the election date is May 9th, and early voting is open right now as we speak. You can vote either at the district offices in Rosemount, the Western Service Center in Apple Valley, or the main county facility in Hastings.
Great reminder. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our old business. I would like to welcome Christopher Anyangarob Shah to the podium to discuss our fiscal year 2023-24 capital expenditure budget.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board, and our public stakeholders. I'm Christopher Anyangarob Shah, Coordinator of Finance for ISD 196. This is the second hearing we have for the capital expenditure budget. The first time we brought this item to the school board was on our February 13th school board meeting. It was, we reviewed it in, in more detail. In the packet that we have included for today's meeting is a full representation of the budget book. Throughout the, from the time the, the board first reviewed this, we disseminated the funds to the, to the buildings, and then they took some time and collated what they were planning to expand those dollars in, in whatever areas. So with what they have provided, we compiled that into the book. It is included in the packet. It does include what building-level detail of expenditures. It also includes district-level details of expenditures in areas of either curriculum purchases, tax books, and other improvements across the district. When we reviewed the capital expenditure budget, there are two components that we're looking at this evening, and that's the operating capital. We projected an estimate of $14.8 million in revenue appropriations that are being expanded at $13.8. We anticipate at the end of the fiscal year for the operating capital, we will have $1 million left in fund balance. We also have the long-term facilities maintenance, and for that, we are proposing 16, estimating $16.7 million in revenue and proposing $15.1 million in expenditures. We anticipate at the end of the fiscal year 23-24, the long-term facilities maintenance budget will have 6, $1.6 million of carryover. This is an action item. Everything that we have presented has, is in the packet, but I'll entertain any questions or clarifications that the board may have.
Excellent. Thank you. Before we get into questions, this is a second reading action item. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jackie, second by Joel. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions from board members?
No question, but just a comment that this is on, on our website. If anybody wants to look, go back and look at our capital A budget, they can certainly do that. Lots of interesting information.
Absolutely. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have new business, and I'd like to welcome Barb St. Aubin to the podium to discuss Administrative Regulation 801.5 AR Community Use of District Facilities.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the school board, Superintendent Krieger. I'm here tonight to share with you the first reading of the proposed fee changes to Administrative Regulation 801.5 AR Community Use of Facilities. Community education is responsible for scheduling our district facilities outside of our regular school day. Fees are charged to users to offset the costs of some of the administration and staffing during these hours. The last regular fee increase was four years ago for the 2019-20 school year. The proposed fees today reflect between a 4% to a 20% increase and are comparable to the fees charged in our neighboring districts, as well as districts throughout the metro area. This is the first reading, so no action is needed tonight. Kaia Bruce will be back for the May 8th Regular School Board Meeting for the second reading and for action on these proposed fees. In the meantime, I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? I don't have any either. Thank you so much. We will see Kaia at the next board meeting for old business. All right. And that brings us almost to the end of our agenda. I'm going to turn it over. Are there any, or this is board member and superintendent updates. Are there any board members with items they'd like to share? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Okay, great. I would really encourage everyone to take in a high school theater performance this month. We have such incredibly talented shows coming our way, so take your choice or go to all of them. Eastview High School is having its annual variety show, Bravo, starting next week for a two-week run. Apple Valley High School is performing Clue, April 19th through the 22nd. Rosemount High School is performing Connecting the Dots, April 26th through May 6th, and Eagan High School is putting on Shrek the Musical, April 27th through May 7th. So visit the high school websites for information about times and get your tickets. You will be glad you did. I also want to invite parents, guardians, other restaurants, other residents, sorry, interested in serving the district to consider applying for an opening on one of our district's citizen and staff advisory councils. Four of our nine advisory councils are currently accepting applications for terms that begin in July. These include the Budget Advisory Council, the Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Council, the Gifted and Talented Advisory Council, and the Legislative Advisory Council. For more information, go to the district website at district196.org. For more information, go to the district website at district196.org. And lastly, and Director Stotts already started, reminded you about voting for the bond, so I'll repeat his information, just to remind all eligible voters in District 196 that you can vote now on the district's bond referendum special election. You can vote absentee by mail or absentee in person at the district office in Rosemont, the Dakota County Western Service Center in Apple Valley, and the Dakota County Administration Center in Hastings during normal business hours through May 8th. Voting will also be available on Election Day, Tuesday, May 9th, at our combined school-district polling places. For information about the two bond referendum questions or where to vote, go to the bond referendum page on the district website at district196.org. Thank you.
Great reminders. I know all of our high school shows are great, but when I told my kids that they were doing Shrek the Musical, everyone screamed, so we definitely have to make that one at least. That brings us to our end of our agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Suchin, second by Jackie. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a five-zero vote. We are adjourned until our next board meeting on Monday, May 8th.